Good, I appreciate that. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand and if you have a hand, please remove it. Join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Jessica may have a roll call of trustees, please.
Yes. Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Judy?
Here.
Trustee Capone?
Here.
Trustee Law?
Here.
President Jeff?
Here, sort of.
Trustee Spencer?
Present.
Trustee Yau?
Here.
Just say I'm virtually here.
Wait, wait, wait. Am I on mute?
No.
Here.
Is that any present? Zero absent? Zero excused? Two remotely via Google Hangouts?
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Uh, now, board, uh, board members may have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor? Aye, everyone. Okay, motion carried.
Aye.
Brings us to our public forum. This is the time in the board meeting agenda when district residents may address the Board of Education with their concerns. Each resident has up to three minutes to address the board. Total fifteen minutes will be allowed for each public forum. Do we have anyone on Google Hangouts at this time that would like to address the Board of Education? No? Okay. You may also submit your questions to jaynichel@depueschools.org. Jessica Nischel, District Clerk, at this time. There's nobody in for the public forum. Uh, we'll go to our superintendent's report and Dr. Rabey's budget presentation for the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay, it's gonna be coming up on your screens.
Nothing yet?
Nothing working out.
Do you see it now?
No.
There are three Jessica Nischels in the, uh, the group. One of them says, "Presentation." If you click on her and pin that, you should be able to see it.
If you click on Jessica, Jessica Nischel presenting entire screen, is that what we want?
Yes, you should be able to see it through that.
Yep.
This will take over from Jessica Nischel, main presenter.
Correct. Okay, hopefully everyone can, uh, take a look at that. Um, this is the 2021
Justin, did you get it?
...budget development, uh, presentation.
Change your layout, Justin, to Tile and Finder.
I'm sorry. Our first slide for the presentation is just the review.
Yeah, I have to interrupt you, Jeff. I just want to make sure. Everybody in the cafeteria has to have their mask on. I would, I would suggest that, please. Thank you.
The first slide on the presentation is just a review of our budget reductions since 2010. And you can see that, um, since that, over that period of time, we have reduced a significant amount of expenditures. And we were able to leverage our declining enrollment at that, at that, uh, at the same time, um, to be able to balance our budgets and put through our, uh, fiscal responsible, um, budget plan. Taking a look at our enrollment, uh, we're projecting about 1,812 students for the fall of 2020. And this is with a, um, higher enrollment, uh, than, than what we've seen before for our kindergarten. We're looking at, um, an enrollment right now, um, between 140 and 150 if our projections continue to, um, uh, track the way they are. So we have, uh, our, always our first slide is our, is, um, the three main drivers for our expenditures. And this is our teacher retirement system, our TRS, our employees' retirement system, ERS. Um, so the two, the, um, retirement systems, um, in totality, along with our health insurance and our negotiated salaries. So, uh, with that, we're looking at an increase of about 3.71%, um, and a little, or a little over a million dollars. The offset that are the, um, major cost, um, our major revenue streams. One is state aid, uh, which we're projecting to receive, um, a little over 1% after, um, the budget plan was adopted in early April. Um, and there's gonna be more conversation on state aid in the future, uh, later on in the presentation. Our tax levy is set at 1.9, uh, 1.94% increase. Um, and that's based on the tax levy cap formula, which I'll review in a second. And then we're also utilizing our reserves and fund balance. And that is really, um, we're leveraging the surplus that we, uh, have realized during the closure. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on as well. So we're looking at about a 4.47% increase on our revenue side. On the tax levy, um, cap formula, the CPI was set at 1.81%. And then running through our formula for the tax levy cap, we're able to utilize one of the exclusions, uh, our capital expense within the local budget for a little over $23,000. For tax levy, after running through the formula, would be set, as I mentioned previously, at 1.94% of the first slide. Oh, sorry. And there, there is provision in, in the law to be able to go over the tax levy cap. If you, um, do a super majority, which is 60% of your voters. The climate to go over the cap, obviously, especially at this time, is, is not advisable. It's could be high risk of budget failure, considering also our combined wealth ratio within the Pew is 26.45, which is set the seventh lowest out of 23-year economy school districts. And then the Pew's, uh, three-year average for pre-reduced launch percentage from kindergarten to sixth grade is 52%, which is ranked fourth highest. Then the utilization of our reserves, um, if you take a look at this slide, you'll see that we're utilizing a number of our restricted reserves to offset, um, the expenditures associated with those, uh, restricted reserves. We're, we'll be utilizing, um, a little over 1.4 million dollars out of our current reserves. And then graphically, um, over, um, last, um, decade, you can see how we utilize our reserves and the, the, the two dips in this graph are right after, um, a capital project. So it's right after we were able to utilize our capital reserve to offset the, um, local, um, expenses for those capital projects. So that's why the reserves have dipped in both of those, uh, years on that term. Switching the focus over to the budget requests that were, uh, throughout the budget development process beginning back in December. If you take a look at this slide, uh, you can see that a, a number of the items are in yellow and two of them are red. The ones that are in the red, um, have, have already been reduced as we went about balancing the budget from, uh, March till now. And then, if you take a look at the ones in yellow, those are ones that we would look to be reducing if we need to make up more, um, uh, of a gap, if we lose more state aid and/or realize more of a reduction from economy sales tax. So going back to our March 17 meeting, at that point in time, if the board remembers, we, um, were able to make reductions.
I know this is difficult, but can we go back to that last slide quick? It's hard to see. Yeah, okay. Can we pause here for just a second? So the red, obviously, is not happening. The technology replacement.
The technology, we only reduced some of that technology. The Wildcat Prep is not happening because of the uncertainty of what the summer will bring.
Right. I understand that.
To make that reduction right away. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we did not reduce all of the technology expenses. And I'll go, and I have a slide coming up that I'll show you.
Okay, and do you have it about the yellow as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was just my question.
So, uh, going on to the March 17th, so you'll, you'll see that we did make those reductions, uh, to get into a balanced budget of a little over $46 million. From March until, uh, present day, we've had, uh, some, um, increases to both its programming, um, retirement expenses, unemployment changes, and we also had some other additional budget costs. So that $264,000, $264,990 represents a net of expenditures. It's, it's some additions, but some, some reductions as well. So if you go into here, you can then see that $264,990 becomes our, our new budget shortfall. So, as we always utilize, uh, our rationale for making reductions, we always try and protect our program for students. We protect reasonable class sizes and at the same time adhere to contractual limits. Maximize district resources and efficiencies. Review and evaluate needs versus wants, review and evaluate budgeting and spending for your child. With that in mind, uh, we made, um, the reductions, one through three were made, uh, in March to get to our, um, to get to our flat budget, to close that gap. And then you'll see that we also reduced the, um, Wildcat Prep, or I'm sorry, yeah, the Wildcat, uh, Summer Camp in order to, um, uh, close the gap a little bit more. Uh, but also, uh, realizing that we might not be able to have that camp issue. Then if you take a look at, uh, the technology one, Justin, I think you had a question on that. You can see that we reduced that, uh, by $270,000, um, because we feel as if replacement Chromebooks will be purchased through the remaining smart skills funding. And we will purchase a more efficient firewall protection system, which is, which is part of that over $500,000 request that we got in that previous slide. We didn't reduce all of it, just, uh, $270,000.
So just my question on the Wildcat Summer Prep, um, camp. My understanding, wasn't that through a grant?
Right, initially it was through a grant, it was through the cut grant, the cut grant.
Correct.
It's, it's out. So we were absorbing it in our budget because it was such, such a successful program.
Well, yeah, we loved it. That was not the, the question. But so this is now a budget item from last year that we're not anticipating to have to pay for this year?
We, we, we never paid for it through the budget. It was through the grant. This would have been the first year that we wouldn't pay for it through the budget, but we can't run it.
But we're not gonna, it's not gonna run. And so it, it was budgeted for, for next year?
This is all correct.
Right. And so it's being taken out as a negative because we have absorbed, we like the program, we want to keep it, and we're not, there's, there's nothing to pay for right now.
Correct.
Because we're not gonna run the program.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, with that in mind, our budget shortfall is now zero. So we were able to make up that, uh, next level of gap that we had between March and today. Now, the, the, um, the, the question of the day is how do we further fill a gap that we might have in, you know, coming up, um, with further state aid reductions and our sales tax loss? So, uh, we have to identify that amount. We also have to identify any federal stimulus monies that, that, that come into the state and/or directly to school districts. And then if they did reduce the amount of expenditures in a reverse prioritized order, we couple those reductions with further use of district-generated revenue, which is a fund. So with that in mind, I put together, um, this chart. It's, it's, there's three different tiers. And these are merely guide codes. So it's not, it's not set in stone that if we have a million-dollar, um, uh, loss in revenue, that we would do exactly all of these things in that, in that order. This is just a, uh, it, it would be kind of like on a sliding scale in a prioritized order of how we would go about filling the future gap that, that we don't know what that may or may not look like at this point in time. But any event, we, we tried to balance between, um, cuts in our expenditures and the utilization, responsible utilization of our fund balance, um, brought on by, uh, the surplus that we have from this current fiscal year. So if you take a look at this, um, just to take a look at the cuts right now, uh, if it was in that tier one, the million dollars, almost half of that, we become all supplies by 10%. Any new equipment, travel, uh, and conferences by 50%. More technology, apartheid clerical and cafeteria monitor that we budgeted for, and some fuel. We go to the next tier, if we had another $400,000 that we would have, that we had to make up. We would look at, uh, summer curriculum, additional second shift custodian, uh, reduce the middle school secretary by, um, 0.5 FTE. We currently have a retirement deposition, so we would only fill that by 0.5 FTE. Uh, we would look at not, um, uh, filling the new kindergarten teaching assistant position, uh, the Hugo Heights musical, uh, advisor and supervisor, and, um, we would not purchase the Chromebook insurance policy. Then looking at another, uh, $300,000, we would cut all of the TOSA positions. And I, and as a result, uh, because if we didn't have the TOSA positions, we wouldn't have to have the, um, leave replacement, uh, teaching position. We could reduce that position as well. So all in all, we, if we, we had a, approximately a $1.7 million cut in, uh, revenue, either from state aid or sales tax, this is how we would go about making that up.
Okay, I, can I stop and ask a question?
Sure.
Um, so, within this shift, um, obviously, we have our board goals and we don't want to cut programs and we don't want to cut services. That's within our, our board goals. Um, uh, so where we look at cutting, um, new equipment at the top tier of the first million? I'm concerned and, and technology for another $100,000. Um, what does that mean for new equipment and technology when we've committed to one-to-one? Where does that money affect the kids?
Well, it's more of, it's more of the, the, the support behind the scenes. Um, it'll have, it'll, it'll have a lesser effect on kids than if we were cutting, um, individuals, faculty and staff. This is something that we could push off another year. It's just upgrade, um, current technologies that we have within the district.
Which is phenomenal. Right. Okay. All right. That was just, I was just curious where that, that money was gonna be made up in technology and, and new equipment for technology.
Yeah, it's, it's, no, it's really upgrades, upgrades that we would push off for another year.
Right. And, right. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Good question. Okay, um, going on to, uh, the vehicle reserve. The board realizes that we have a vehicle reserve repetitive place since 2009 and reauthorized in 2016. This allows us to purchase vehicles and, um, equipment, uh, that otherwise we would have to borrow money for, um, and then pay down interest. By using our own, um, monies, we can actually, um, uh, make money on these purchases when we get back, uh, our state aid for, for those, uh, purchases. So you can see since 2015, um, we, uh, projected that we would actually make, uh, almost $80,000 on the purchases of these vehicles. Um, and we've been doing, uh, quite well, uh, in doing that very responsibly. Taking a look at this year, if the board recalls, uh, we were originally looking at purchasing five buses, uh, four, um, I think 66-passenger buses, um, and 148-passenger bus. We've reduced that. And again, a lot of that is, uh, due to, uh, the fact that we've been closed, uh, since, since March. And we feel as if we could probably get another year out of those buses that we had on the list, uh, because they have been, um, basically mothballed since then. This one bus, though, um, is in need of replacement. This 48-passenger, uh, bus, surplus, uh, the one that is from 2009, it's a Bluebird, has some serious, uh, mechanical issues, and has almost $50,000 behind it. So we're only looking to purchase one of us this year at $146,840. Another model reserve, correct?
Yes.
Capitalities, uh, and the board, uh, is aware that we've been doing capitalities for the last several years. We've been doing little mini projects, $400,000. Uh, this year, we're looking at, uh, well, let me, let me go to this slide first, uh, just so everyone can understand. Uh, we get 80% back on our capital projects. So if we're, we could do a million dollars worth of work, we get, uh, the, the money back, uh, in aid, and it really only cost us, um, $280,000 at the end of the year. Or at the end of the day. So over 10 years, we can do a significant amount more year by year, uh, ticking off those little projects. And this year, um, we've been looking to upgrade our pool interior finishes, accessories and other equipment, uh, specifically replacing the starter blocks. Um, the pool has not, uh, been upgraded in this fashion for quite some time. And I looked at one of my more senior, uh, board members to, to get a nod on that. So we've, we've been doing great things outside, uh, just upgraded the high school gym, uh, and now it's time to take care of everyone. So taking a look at the overall budget and, um, expenditures, I want to switch to this. You can see a, a total amount of increase in expenditures is a little under $1.4 million. And this includes, um, all the categories, administration, general support, instructional, transportation benefits, debt service, and, uh, the vehicle reserve purchases. If you look at a, a percentage of how that works out in our budget, um, instructional programming, which is what we're in the business for, makes up more than half of, of, of the budget. Administration general support's 10%, transportation's 5%, benefits is 23%, and debt service and obligations is 9%. And if you look over at the revenue side, um, we're looking at an increase in revenue of, uh, 1.8 million, a little over $1.8 million. Um, and again, uh, you can see that reduction on that page for sales tax that we're expecting to see. And looking at percentages, um, within the budget revenue side, we received about 45% of our revenue from state aid, 40% from property tax, 3% from reserves, 7% from appropriated fund balance, one, uh, miscellaneous revenue, and then 4% from sales tax in the interim. In the three-part, three-part budget, uh, we're looking at an increase of about 6% in administration, uh, 2.6% for 7%, 7% in program, 6.86% in capital, a total of a 3.62% in the total budget.
Kristen? Can you come plug this computer in? I must have kicked it when I opened the window. Hey.
They tell you to look at, um, the estimated tax rate, considering no changes to assessments. I think I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to plug up here. Give you a second. You won't be close to the screen.
Yeah, like I'm, uh, uh, we won't know, at least I've heard from other people, December, January is when we really find out about the end. This is going to affect us.
Next, next, this, I'm gonna worry.
What are we talking about?
I think, I think what we're gonna see is, um, intermittent, a- after every quarter is finished up, I think we will see, um, uh, a designation of how much state aid we might not get. However,
I'm, I'm, I'm on the slide of, of tax, estimated tax rate.
Yes, Mr. Bush had a question about, uh,
Okay. I didn't hear his question.
He, he asked about when, when would we, uh, find out when, how, how bad we're going to lose revenue, specifically stated. So that's what I'm addressing.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, he, he said every quarter, we, he would evaluate and make a determination. But the thing that we don't know is what type of federal stimulus is gonna, is going to come our way. Uh, because that could be linked to the impact that it has on schools. So that's what we keep our ear to the rail for. So, um, taking a look at the estimated tax rate, uh, considering no changes to assessments at this point in time, if you, um, take a look at that first row, that's full value, that's 100% of full value. So the estimate, estimated dollar change is a dollar 49 per thousand, or, uh, uh, 8.07%. Then if you look at, uh, Chief DeWag, now Chief DeWag was going through a revale, um, they were at 85% valuation last year.
And they stopped.
Correct. So now they're down, they're, they're down to 83%. Um, so that, that eight-dollar, uh, change is $2.31 per thousand, or a 10.4% uh, increase. Lane Jaster? Yes.
Can I ask you this question to piggyback off of Todd's question?
Sure.
And I know you don't have the answer, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Please know that. But we don't have answers for this year's budget. And the state is waiting on federal relief to help school districts because the governor has said 20% down, 20% down on every budget everywhere. And I know you don't have the answer, so I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just saying, like, how, how, how do we proceed forward with these numbers, knowing the governor's saying minimum 20%, and I know he doesn't always have the numbers right. But how do we proceed forward to adopt something without federal relief?
I'll go back, I'll go back to this slide, Justin.
And I appreciate that. And that was great.
That's why.
How we would handle it in it, like, is this like an emergency situation?
Correct. So after, after the budget's adopted and hopefully, um, supported by the public, and we hear something in the middle of July that we're going to lose either more sales tax or we're going to lose further state aid, we would go to this chart to begin to fill that gap.
Right. That's, and, and I guess that was my question to piggyback off of Todd, is all is well, and, and it's good. It's just, where do we go from when the governor gives us, or the, the federal government gives the governor the go-away for us to get a budget together that's a re, uh, uh, like, I don't know, a realistic budget? But you don't know that timeline.
We don't. We don't know that timeline. We don't, we don't know that timeline, and, um, it, it's gonna, and there's two, there's, there's two factors, there's one, what, uh, the state has to continue to evaluate, and their, their loss of revenue, and then what that impact is gonna have on, on school aid, state aid to schools, and then we also have the, uh, factor of, uh, the federal stimulus, and all of the, um, uh, advocacy that's going on in trying to, uh, continue to support schools and municipalities for the most part, so...
Right, at this point, and, and, we're all in uncharted territory. My question is, at this point, what do we, what can we adopt and move forward for a vote in June, and what could change, I mean, a lot could change before the vote, when we send out ballots?
Again, the, the budget, the budget's the budget, right, as, as I'm presenting, and hopefully you'll adopt them, so what, what we're planning for is the unknown gap. So we have our budget, we have our budget plan, it's, it's fiscally responsible, in order to continue to provide for the programming that we have set, um, for our kids, and then we have a plan in here that I presented, that we, we will be prepared for any further revenue cut.
So, so I guess, to be clear, and anyone listening in, I'm just, again, I'm not challenging, I'm just asking your question, so this is the dire straits, this is the worst-case scenario. If we come in and the state comes in, or the federal government comes in, and the state then trickles the money down to municipalities and school districts with extra aid, we will adjust it, but this is the budget adjusted for this consideration on this budget vote in June, and then should money come in beyond it, we will not have to take these, uh, make these cuts, these are, this is the worst-case scenario.
Well, we, we already, we, we already made the cuts that we needed to make to get the budget to where it's at right now. The slide that I showed you is if we receive another reduction in aid of one point seven million dollars, we would then need to make those cuts. So we have our budget balanced right now, and from all the information that we know right now, as of today, we have our budget balanced. If we lose more revenue after our budget's adopted, and, and through July, after July first, we would then go to that slide that I showed you, and begin to utilize those guideposts, those tiers, to make further reductions in the budget and use of our current fund balance.
Right, I understand that, but my, my question is, why are, where are we sitting with our current reductions now?
I, I showed you that.
If, so what, maybe a brief raise to help, maybe, or...
Hit your mic, hit your mic.
So what I'm hearing you say, Jeff, is if, all, if there is no further cuts, our budget is balanced for the whole year. Unfortunately, after the vote likely, there could be more cuts, and where you have a plan in place to deal with up to one point seven million dollars for the cuts that's outlined here, but what the people will be voting on is what's boots on the ground right now, data-wise, or assuming, maybe, two fingers crossed, that the federal aid will come into that, and the budget will stay balanced, but we're cognizant that it's likely there's gonna be more cuts, we just don't know exactly what happened, so the people voting that are listening, understand we're, we're giving our best budget based off what we know today, understanding that further things could be done.
Correct.
That kind of getting very going, Justin?
There's a plan, there's a plan in place, and, and the, the, this is, this is the big problem.
The big problem is if we went ahead and made those cuts, those, that one point seven million dollar cuts now, and because we're worried that we're not gonna get the aid, well, then if we got the aid, or if we got stimulus, we couldn't do anything with that money to bring that, those positions back, or, or those, the equipment back, because you can't spend over the budget that you budgeted, that you already got it approved by the voters. So you don't wanna, you don't wanna go out with a bare, like, as I've been mentioning to the board for the last couple months, you don't wanna go out with a bare-bones budget, because if the aid comes through as scheduled, or if you, if we receive stimulus, you, you can't go over the budgeted amount that was adopted.
I guess I hear Pat, I hear Pat, and I, I just am, I get it, I understand, I'm confused as to if we're maintaining, I, I don't know, I...
I, I think the problem might be is that we all know that there's another shoe to drop, we just don't know if it's a big shoe.
That's right, Pat, that's what I'm saying, there's more...
So that's people both knowing that we've got a plan.
We have a plan to cover that, that shoe drop.
That's, that's kinda, I think, it's weird, I mean...
There's more to come, Pat.
So...
Yeah, but we had, there's a contingency plan built in place, Justin, I think that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which make, which makes sense, but good questions, thank you.
Okay, um, so let me get back to, uh, Lancaster, who did go through the full, uh, eval, they're at a hundred percent valuation. Um, now, you'll see that there's a four dollar and two cent drop per thousand, um, and that re, that reas, the reason behind that is that Lancaster was at a seventy-seven percent valuation last year, so they've jumped significantly, uh, from one year to the next, which causes that reduction, uh, in estimated dollar change, and, and percent change of sixteen point seven seven percent. So taking a look at, uh, the impact on the levy to rate the bill, um, uh, if, if, uh, you take a look at the things that we have control over, don't have control over, the variables impacting, uh, these projections, um, specifically expenditures, so it makes sense, if our expenditures are down, then we can, uh, have a realization that our levy rate and bill will go down if expenditures are up, the opposite effect, we have to, um, raise our revenue, and then our levy rate and bill have to come down. On the revenue side, if our revenues are up, like if our state aid increased, or we got stimulus, um, um, or sales tax was up, then we can reduce the other side of our revenue streams, and that's the levy rate and bill. Revenues are down, um, we have to bring up the levy rate and bill to offset that. On the assessment side, and this is what we're seeing, uh, with the difference specifically this year between Chief Duwaga and Lancaster, when assessments are up, there's no impact to the levy, because if we need fifteen million dollars for our levy, we still need fifteen million dollars, but there's more value from that, those assessments across a particular municipality, therefore the rate and the bill can come down, because that, that's, it's spread out amongst, um, all of those, uh, residents. If assessments are down, again, no impact to the levy, need fifteen million dollars, uh, but the rate and the bill are going to go up, because there's less value to be spread out amongst, uh, the taxpayers, and therefore the rate and the bill, um, go up. Taking a look at, uh, estimated changes for property tax bills for homes that would be assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, and we'll look at both Chief Duwaga and, uh, Lancaster, again, looking at last year, nineteen twenty, Chief Duwaga had a sus value of eighty-five percent, Lancaster's at seventy-seven percent, you jump over to twenty twenty-one, um, when you apply that equalization rate, uh, Chief Duwaga came down to eighty-three percent, so a hundred thousand dollar value home is now a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars, and Lancaster being a hundred percent is a hundred thousand dollars. So a tax bill for twenty twenty on a hundred thousand dollar home in Chief Duwaga would be, uh, two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, or an increase of three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-six cents, and in Lancaster, because they were at seventy-seven percent last year, uh, would be one thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents, or a drop of one thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents. This is a budget history over the last twenty-one years for DePew, uh, our average tax levy increase, uh, since two thousand and one has been two point zero five percent, uh, with an average budget increase of two point four seven percent. So our budget, the two propositions that will be on the absentee ballots, the proposed budget is forty-six million two hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars, for a budget-to-budget percent increase change of three point six-two percent, budget-to-budget dollar change is one million six hundred and sixteen thousand sixty-seven dollars, tax levy would be set at eighteen million four hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, or an increase of three hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, or one point nine four percent. On the vehicle side, the vehicle purchased, uh, from the reserve fund is, uh, one bus, uh, for a hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars, and that's a forty-eight passenger bus with wifi, and we surplus a vehicle, um, with over forty-seven thousand and a hundred miles, uh, to offset that. Contingency budget, if our budget is not successful during this absentee ballot on June ninth, our, as, as I just mentioned, our current proposed, uh, budget, uh, with a levy of one point nine four percent is a little over forty-six million dollars. If the budget failed, we cannot raise the tax levy, um, over what it is this year, so it would be zero percent, the budget would drop to forty-five million nine hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars, or a two point eight three percent increase, um, we would have to cut non-union salary increases, um, we would have to cut, uh, training, um, equipment, except state-aided hardware and health and wellness equipment, or two hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we would lose our capital outlay, uh, of the hundred thousand dollars, so our total reduction would be three hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and with, under, under a contingency budget, there would be no continued use of our facilities.
Can we go back one slide, but, potentially? No, yeah, that one, sorry, with the graphs.
This one?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, um, so, we've been looking at this for a long time, and I thought the lines are, I, and I, I should know this, but I don't, um, the lines are supposed to come closer together, the, the solid baseline, and red and blue, so why are they getting further apart?
Well, you, uh, you got, you got a couple, a couple things, um, working, and that's, that's really our state aid, um, we have to offset that state aid, and when we offset that reduction in state aid, as I showed in a couple slides previously, we have to, we have to make it up on the tax line, so as...
Here's my, my question then, so we're offsetting it with fund balance, correct?
Uh, fund balance and, and the tax line. Those are the only other two.
You're wrong, what?
We're offsetting state aid with tax levy and fund balance, those are the only other two, uh, funding streams.
Revenue, right, so, long-term, this has always been my concern, um, where, it's, it's nothing new, um, where are we at putting some back in the fund ba, balance, and back into the reserves on an annual basis, because...
We do do that, but not annually, every June.
To offset the budget.
So every, every June, if you remember, every June, we take our fun, our surplus and fund balance, and we distribute it amongst all the reserves. This year, however, we're not going to do that until August, until we have a clearer picture on what, uh, state aid is going to do, and if we have further reductions, because we don't want to bury that into, um, those, um, categorical reserves, those restricted reserves, um, because we can't, then we can't utilize it, so we're waiting to, we're waiting to put fund balance into those reserves until about August.
Which I understand, and I know the high line this year is off, a hundred percent, so at this point, where the line of budget increase is high, can you explain that, why, why is it so high, o, over the last eight years?
Well, I, I mean, I can go all the way back up to the first slide, uh, for those, uh, major cost drivers, retirement and, uh, salaries are the two bigger ones on that. Health insurance, we, we've been able to control, but it's retirement and, um, contractual salaries.
Okay, I just don't know why it wouldn't have been higher before than now.
Well, John wants to say something?
Justin, one of the big things here is if you look at the budget revenue, uh, circle back there, state aid is only forty-five percent, that's been, we've been playing with that for years about getting the state to fund the school, so as that keeps dropping down, it comes back to the local side of the revenue stream, with either the property tax rate or the sales tax. Well, that state aid number keeps going down, and we have unfunded mandates, and we have to do a cost of money, that's why this line did not come close.
If I, if I add to it, this year we're taking our first big hit on the teachers' retirement that we've had in a long time, too, because that's up in the, the double-digit percentage wise, and that's a, that's a function of market, is it not?
Yes, that's a function of market.
Yeah, we, we've had a run of a few years of hard work, so, and this is, uh, and that I guess is balanced there, balanced out.
Right.
So...
And that was, one of the victories from last year, if you remember, was we were able to set up the teacher's retirement system reserve, so we're even utilizing that to offset our, our costs.
It's eighteen months, twelve days?
About eighteen months, so we're, we're gonna see that, and that's why...
I didn't see, I didn't hear what Todd said.
Todd said that with, uh, the current set of circumstances in the stock market, the teachers' retirement system increases will be, um, considerably more, uh, next year and the year after, so the, uh, good news on that, uh, it's very strong, is that we were able to set up that reserve, because of all of the advocacy that we've been doing involving, um, and the legislated, legislatively took action to allow school districts to have that reserve, and we're actually using some of that.
And that's fantastic, I mean, you know, Jeff, you know, I mean, I'm not, I don't need to speak, but you know I'm a teacher too, so Todd knows, and, and I appreciate, uh, Pat and John's comment, that, um, it is a result of the climate we're in with real estate and everything else, and the reevaluation in Chief Duwaga has been a joke, I will attest to that, um, and so, I, I won't speak on that publicly anymore, haha, um, but yeah, so I just wanna make sure we're financially sound going forward, and that's, and, and the taxpayers in DePew can't afford a huge tax increase, and I know you know that, Jeff, and Sue Arena, and I wish I could be in the room with you, but I'm not, I commend all the work you do, and the budget looks sound, and I know Jeff has the best interest of the kids at heart, and I'll just end my comments with that, that I, I appreciate working with everyone on the board, and Jeff, and, um, I wish Sue Frye a, um, wonderful retirement, um, and all, and, uh, Carol Townsend, while I'm speaking, they're on, I think they're on mute, but, um, I wish them, I can go on, on board remarks, but I wish them, and Janet, I, she is phenomenal, I'll speak later, but, um, I'll let Jeff continue, I'm sorry, I went on a, I got on my soapbox, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I just gotta finish up.
I'm using my microphone.
So, um, there are two, uh, Board of Education seats up for election, each, uh, for three-year terms, um, Amy Dootie is one A, and Nicholas Lamarcus, um, who, uh, be going for Miss Capitosis, who will be stopping down from the market, uh, and more on that in June. So the budget vote date is actually Tuesday, June ninth, it was actually supposed to be today, but it's, it's, uh, Tuesday, June ninth, uh, and all absentee ballots have to be received by the district by five P M. Absentee ballots will be, be bailing out, mailed out to all, um, registered voters in Erie County, there are over, um, uh, registered voters, um, in DePew, we got our list from Erie County Board of Elections, there are over ten thousand, um, registered voters in our district, and those will be going out as soon as they're printed, the printing will start, uh, tomorrow, once the budget is adopted by the Board of Education. To be eligible, you must be a citizen of the United States, eighteen years of age, and be a resident of the school district for a period of thirty-eight weeks prior to the vote. Any questions from the board?
Yes, sorry. So, um, Jeff, the, so how are, how are people getting absentee ballots, I know I emailed you, but how are they getting them?
As soon as, as soon as, uh, we get a request, Jessica receives a request, they are getting mailed one, if they're not a registered voter, um, they can contact Jessica, and we will mail one out. If they're not a registered voter, um, they can contact Jessica and we will mail one out.
Okay, so registered, if, I, I know I saw your email, but registered voters, if you're a registered voter in, in the district, you're getting an absentee ballot through.
Correct.
Okay. So it's not every resident, it's just registered voters.
Correct. And if you're not a registered voter, but would like to vote on the, um, uh, school budget and meet the qualifications, just contact Jessica Nysel. Um, the information's on the voter, on the vote, vote cards. Um, and she sent you an absentee ballot.
So it's not just, it's just, it's not just homes of parents of. It's registered voters from the county?
From the Erie County Board of Elections.
Thank you, Jeff.
And all that, all, all that information was on the mail-in.
Any other questions on the budget? Thank you. Dave, back to you.
All right, thanks Dr. Raby. Brings us to our consent agenda. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Good. May have a motion now that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the consent agenda items as submitted.
So moved.
Here a second, are there any questions? All in favor? Anybody opposed? No, motion is carried. Before I move on though, I'd like to, uh, recognize and congratulate Jay, Becky, Natasha, Jill and Lynn for their new appointments. Some promotions there, so I see that a number of you are on, on the meeting and participating, so. We wish you well in your new roles, uh, we know you'll do great and you have our full support. And as, I just echo, uh, Justin Sentiments, Carol and, um, we're going to miss you, you know, as well. Uh, appreciate your, you know, your service, Janet as well, Sue, uh, but Sue, you're not going anywhere. I don't, um, so anyway, we appreciate, um, all that you've done and, um, we look forward to, uh, when we get back to normal.
Yep.
Okay, so where am I now? May have a motion, the Board of Education Superintendent approve the 2020, 2021 DePue School District Budget as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to our next public forum. This is the time of the Board meeting agenda, district residents may address the Board of Education with their concerns. Each resident is up to three minutes to address the Board, a total of 15 minutes would be allowed for each public forum. I don't hear anybody, do we have anybody on Google Hangouts at this time that'd like to address the Board of Education? Most of you submit your questions to jaynysel@depueschool.org. Jessica Nysel, our district clerk at this time. Comments or remarks by board members?
Am I on, is my mic on?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Dave. I'd like to start. Um, I'd like to wish all the people that, um, have worked so hard in our district to be TOSs and worked their way through an administration and worked with Dr. Raby and the administration to be real leaders at Kyuga and the middle school and the high school. Um, as a teacher myself, um, I have faith. I have a four-year-old and a seven-month-old and I have no issue leaving DePue. I have nowhere I want to go other than having my kids attend this school system K-12. That said, um, I really have to reach out to, um, the FADAS, one of, one of your husbands was my gym teacher in high school and is a fantastic administrator at Chikwaga Central, my alumni. And I'm proud to be an alumni of Chikwaga Central and whoever's with your husband, I forget which one it is. Um, I, I, he's a great guy and is doing fantastic things over in Chikwaga Central. And kudos to you. What I have to say about Janet is I have, you know, admired, um, people that have a special ed background. I got my master's in special education, I don't teach it. Um, my wife is a pediatric physical therapist and has interactions with Janet, has had over the past 12 years. And she's been in all districts across Western New York, helping early kids achieve their goals in special ed from K to about fourth grade. And Janet did it K-12 for so long. I have to say humbly, and I'll have to reach out to her because I don't see her hearing me say this, I'll send her a card. I love her so much. My wife has been in districts across Western New York and Janet has been the best. My wife would come home from a meeting and she says, I'm not telling you this because we live in DePue. Janet is the best. She's the best for kids, she's the best for, um, services. She's the best for allowing kids to get what they need when they need it. And Janet showed it time and time again. So I hope Janet enjoys her retirement and she's, it's well deserved. She cared about her kids, I mean, she did an amazing job. And so I'm sorry, I don't know who's on this meeting, who's filling her, her shoes. You have Jill, maybe? Uh, you have amazing large shoes to fill, but I wish you the best and I know you will do the best for the kids of DePue in the special education department. Because believe it or not, as a teacher, the word on the street around Western New York, DePue is a haven for kids with special needs to get what they deserve. Not anything more, not anything less, but what they deserve. And, and I'm proud of that as a board member. So whoever's taken Janet's shoes on this, I think it's Jill, um, I wish you the best, you have large shoes to fill. I wish you the confidence to do it and I think it's important work. And Janet's going to be missed because she did amazing work in our community. But I know, I know you will do good things as well. And with that, I'll, I'll mute myself.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
What he said.
What he said, right, you know, Ca- Carol and Sue, it's, um, we don't want you to go. But, uh, we, we understand this and we appreciate what you've brought to the, the district and some of, you know, our children that, you know, have gone through, uh, K-12. So thank you for your service and what you've done for us ladies. We appreciate you, wish you Godspeed and hope someday we get to see you in person again. If I don't have, uh, if there isn't anybody else that has any other remarks or comments, please everyone.
I unmuted.
Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry Dave. Just with Carol, I mean, Carol, the people we know that have had kids go through the high school and the middle school and everything you've done and the conversations you and I have had, you too. I really appreciate your work and the things you did at Maryvale early in your career are not unnoted in our community. So thank you for your service at DePue and thank you very much for what you did and all the things you did at, at the kids, uh, in DePue, you know. I don't know too many people, I, myself, I don't know if I'd get up in the middle of middle school and, or high school musical and, and do the thing you did. So thank you for your service and, and you will be missed, we can't replace you. Your, your years of experience are beyond and we thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I got one else, I, um, Ms. Nysel, uh, received an award, maybe you can speak a little bit to that. The Erie County, uh, Association of School Boards recognized Jessica as the very first, um, district clerk honorary of the year. Uh, it's, it's a brand new award and she's the first one, she's an honor to her, so congratulations Jessica.
Very nice, thanks for bringing that up, Pat.
Can I ask a couple of different questions? I, I can't.